Good evening and welcome. And would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you. And with that, we'll receive public input from the book.
Sumit, good evening. Quick introduction, my name is Tim Nichols. I'm the owner of AEC Group in Newmarket and also a community member of Oyster River. I've got two boys in the school. We've been here for quite a few years, very involved. I've coached for the past six years. My wife's been involved with the school volunteering. And the reason I'm telling you this is because I'm here as a community member tonight, not as AEC. And the reason I'm here is to make sure that we understand what we're voting on for the Siemens proposal and energy efficiency measures. We got involved with the school district professionally about a year and a half ago. We did an audit at the high school, which most of you are probably aware of, and what we found was really astonishing. We've been in almost every school district in the state, in Maine, and a couple in Massachusetts. What we found here was the highest energy consumption, the highest energy intensity, and some of the worst facilities management conditions that we've ever seen. There have been some changes since that report came out, some positive changes, but we still got a long way to go. Right now, this district spends nearly $1 million more than every other comparable school district in this state and nationally, almost $1 million above the average, just in facilities operation and maintenance. So we've got a lot to do, we've got a long way to go, but the plan we have before us is not what we need. So I'm going to go through this as briefly as I can. So the proposal includes essentially two items, which there's no detailed scope of work, so we really don't understand what's being completed, and the costs aren't itemized, so it's really hard to understand what is actually being done and how do we determine if what was supposed to be done has been completed. The existing control system in the middle school and the two elementary schools was installed roughly a year and a half, two years ago. It's a KMC control systems. It is a modern system. It's what they call an open source, open protocol, non-proprietary system, or backnet. And backnet is the current industry standard. It's the adopted standard everywhere. And the major reason for that is because it's non-proprietary and you're not locked into a single vendor. You can compete your services through multiple vendors. You can't do that with non-proprietary systems. One of the issues that we currently have is the lack of operator experience and training in the systems. The systems do need to be improved, but they work, they're functional. We've seen the web interface, the graphical interface, it works. Can it be optimized? Can it be improved? Yes, and it should be, but for a modest cost. Lighting, the proposal right now is for 350,000 dollars' width of lighting in the three schools, which the cost is notably high based on what we typically see. Most of the fixtures that they're replacing are relatively efficient fixtures already that we would never recommend replacing. The estimated energy savings are grossly overestimated. They're estimating $40,000 in annual energy savings in lighting. Our predicted savings are between 20 and 24,000. And when we do that, we actually model the building in a three-dimensional building model that's approved by the Department of Energy, it's accepted by the state, the PUC, it's the standard. That's how we determine energy savings, not the way these were derived. The most effective thing we can do with lighting is reduction, number one, and control, number two. Until we do that, we shouldn't be looking at replacing fixtures, especially fixtures that are already relatively efficient at a cost of $350,000 that we'll never see a reasonable payback on. Some of the P for P grant issues, and I don't know how familiar everybody is with Pay for Performance program, but it's funded with Regi money, which is the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, so we're one of six states who participate in Regi. If you follow politics, you'll know it was a big point of discussion about a year ago. But essentially, all rate payers pay a portion into Regi. And Regi is intended to promote energy efficiency measures and to reduce carbon emissions. So that funding is available through the PUC to school districts like this for projects that reduce energy. There are some eligibility requirements to get in the program, but we've got more than enough options here in these schools. Typically, we've worked in several P for P programs, and we see contribution that the program will allow up to 50% contribution of your project, so they'll match you 50% max. We typically see between 38% and 43%, because it's really based on what the actual energy savings turn out to be after we model the building, going through a rigorous and iterative modeling process that has to be approved by the PUC.
Can I just ask you to hold for a minute?
Sure.
Make sure that the board is okay with hearing this presentation during public comment, which we're usually limited to three minutes.
Okay.
Objections? Maggie?
I'm more concerned about setting precedent. You know, I think it's fine to get this information, I just wonder if we can add this to our agenda later, rather than during public comment? Because I think we should be consistent the way we handle public comment.
Tim, how much time do you have left in terms of your...
I can wrap up pretty quick. And I didn't mention, but we've retracted our proposal. We were asked to review Siemens' proposal. We reviewed it. We couldn't endorse it based on what we saw and the lack of information that was there to validate the pricing and the energy savings. So we couldn't endorse it. So we were asked to provide a proposal as a P for P partner. So we provided a proposal, essentially working at cost, which we've done for the district, and we offered to continue to do. But we've retracted that because there were some legal questions and concerns, so that's why I'm here in the public session as a community member and not as a AEC representative. So just to summarize, the grant program that's been proposed, or the energy efficiency program, costs $614,000, provides a grant incentive of 21.8%, so far less than what we typically see, less than half of what we've gotten in other school districts in the P for P program. And that also covers all your engineering costs, which there hasn't really been any engineering done. There's been no modeling done. They're following a different approach. They're not following the most rigorous approach, and that's one of the reasons you can't get the energy savings through their proposal. The approach that they're using was actually, actually came out for smaller buildings that couldn't meet the minimum energy threshold, and they were trying to get more projects in. You're far beyond the energy threshold and should not be following the alternate approach in the program. So our recommendations, one is to utilize the P for P program, maximize your incentives, and that's always our approach. Ideally, you can get over 40% contribution to your projects. And there's also a cap, entity cap of $750,000 per year, so you can do multiple projects. You don't have to do just one. Second recommendation is to evaluate the non-proprietary KMC control systems and determine what we need to make it more functional, more user-friendly, and get training for the people who are responsible for programming it and optimizing it, because that's where our energy savings come from. And finally, our recommendation is to get competitive proposals from P for P partners with a defined and clear scope of work, which we don't have. And one of the reasons our facilities are in the state they're in today is because we don't have a scope of work. We authorize projects based on a proposal, and we never really know what we're paying for. Perfect example is the KMC control systems. No scope of work for a project, and that's left lots of issues and lots of problems in its path. So that's all I have.
You.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to address this? Moving along to the superintendent's actions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first action is to, following Tim's commentary, is to have a motion to discuss and consider energy reduction project proposals. So based on what Tim just said, he initially put in a proposal for our consideration, and he's just retracted it. I did call both Tim and Siemens today to let them know what I was recommending this evening, and that was to go with the Siemens proposal. I don't have an engineering degree, so part of this analysis is my experience with a similar operating system in Oakland, Maine, which was Honeywell. I have never done business with Siemens, other than the work that they've done most recently here in the high school, so I don't have any direct connection with them. But I did with a similar firm in Oakland, and part of the fundamental belief I have is that standardizing our controls even through a proprietary system allows us to have one provider who's accountable for making sure we don't repeat the sins of the past. None of these buildings have been optimized for energy savings, and we saw the work directly that Siemens did here at the high school that allowed us to reduce our operating expense of this building for next year by $92,000. So it's pretty significant. Working with Brian Cherry and Sue Caswell in reviewing the proposals, we both were, all three of us were impressed with the facility in which Siemens comes forward, works on issues, continues to refine, and make sure this building is operating at maximum efficiency. I would invite Brian Cherry to the podium, our facilities manager, to talk about what he sees as the strengths of the Siemens proposal. Thank you, Brian.
How you doing? Thanks for having me tonight. I have been in this business for over 10 years. I have a bachelor's degree in engineering, and I have a master's degree in facilities management, and I've operated and maintained control systems on oil tanks, ships, stadiums, and in schools. So that's sort of my background. I think I've already told you that in the past. Number of issues that were brought up by Tim that I would like to talk about. The proprietary nature of the control systems, yeah, that's correct, you know, they will be monitoring, maintaining our control systems, but it does not speak to, you know, who we go to for corrective action, you know? We'll diagnose troubleshoot on our own, they'll support us, and we can choose any vendor we want to conduct corrective maintenance. And we can do it in-house as well with our licensed HVAC technician that Aramark has provided you. As far as the Siemens proposal, I have never seen a more vast scope of work. Hundreds, thousands, thousands of man-hours have gone into it over the last six months, including a few hundred from me, and it is detailed, to say the least. The operators have been trained by Siemens, including myself. I've gone to their course, so we understand it, we know how to operate it. Some that Tim spoke to, having seen the Pro Control System, I don't know how you have done that if we haven't given you the username or password to get on it. The Super T8 lamps are vastly more efficient than the regular T8s, which we have in the schools. And I'll go into detail on the lighting system, the lighting plan, and why an all-inclusive lamp change is more effective than scattered, the scattered approach, which is sort of where we have been thus far. The lighting savings that we've calculated, you'll see in your packets, opposed to the mechanical savings, we split them up for Siemens, lighting and mechanical. The mechanical, Tim thought it should be closer to 25. Well, that includes operating cost savings as well. We won't have to change a lamp in any of these three buildings for four years. A lamp goes out, Siemens comes in, changes it. We won't have to change a ballast for seven years. Siemens comes in, changes it for free. That's all part of this. So I endorse their scope of work. And the lighting plan does, it does speak to reduction and control motion sensors because, you know, we're going to reduce the time that the lights are on, and we're also going to install motion sensors in large areas, so, you know, we're only providing light based on the people in the room as well as airflow. The AEC proposal, two pages, I did not see a vast scope of work.
Brian, Tim's retracted his proposal, so just to the Siemens.
So page one here of the proposal, we split it up into mechanical as well as lighting. The mechanical cost of the project, and we did that because the P for P wasn't the best option. We were able to find a bigger incentive by splitting up the lighting. PSNH offered an incentive. But on the mechanical side, we have 72,000 incentives. The savings is utility and energy savings, 44,000 for a 4.5-year payback on that. And the lighting is 346,000, but again, this is an all-inclusive lamp, ballast, and fixtures district-wide. So now, A, we don't have to cover, we don't have to carry inventory, we don't have to dedicate man-hours to changing out these lamps, and they pile up for recycling. All that will be taken care of by Siemens for the next several years. The lighting project, 346,000, that PSNH incentive is around 61,000. Again, the $40,000 savings annually is including operating cost savings for a 6.9-year payback. So total P for P incentives are 72,754. The PSNH incentive is 61,000, for a total of 134,195. The best part of these incentives is we get them all upfront. We don't have to wait a year for measurement and verification. That's the 134 in its entirety. Siemens is carrying all the risk to this project. Question?
In a perfect world, this wouldn't be a question, but two years from now, we decide that we are going to unload a building in our district.
Yep.
Do we get a rebate?
Rebate on what?
The lighting, 346,000 dollars, if we for some reason decide that we're going to no longer use the middle school and sell it, the SAU office, we decide we want to sell the building, I'm just curious if there's any part of that would be prorated and it would be returned to us.
No, because you might have made the commitment. You would get it through the sale of the building.
Thank you.
So, you know, Siemens project...
I'm sorry, before you go on, I want to understand why, it looks like there were two different vendors here involved, AEC and their proposal, Siemens. For something of this magnitude, wouldn't we want to see more, like three or more?
We would, but that, do you want to speak to the process?
Sure. In your packet is your policy on vendor, very last page of Brian's proposal is your policy related to purchasing, and specific to your policy under section B5, B4A2, that specific brand or type of equipment or material is necessary for the operation of machine by device, by warranty or contract, or to achieve standardization of equipment or material within the building or district. And so there's actually a separate issue besides this, which is the timing of the incentives. We have to be done with the mechanical piece of this by June in order to capture the incentive. Where we've already invested in Siemens for the high school, I feel strongly that this policy supports going with the standardization of the equipment across the district, and largely fits into the issue of efficiency and effectiveness. So that's a policy that I think applies to this particular proposal this evening.
Siemens is a proven company since 1847. They, no concern with ownership of the project's issues could arise down the road. They're going to own the project, they're going to assume all the risk for the project, not the SAU. So, you know, and they're subbing out the lighting installation, but they're accountable for all of the project getting done on time, all the incentives, and they've guaranteed the incentives, even so much as that if somehow it didn't happen, they would pay for it themselves. They've done hundreds of energy projects in Maine, New Hampshire, the entire Harvard campus, Gillette Stadium, Patriot Place campuses are Siemens. We have a number of local schools that have also have Siemens controls, Dover, amongst others. Siemens has already dedicated 80 hours of automation specialist time to develop this integration. It's not as simple as some people might believe to integrate, but we have a lot of the existing infrastructure already in place. That is, Siemens will be a single point of contact during this project. All preventative maintenance service contract for Siemens, they're also going to do preventative maintenance for three years at these three buildings for $20,000 a year, which is great for us, because internally, it allows us to refocus. We spend about 20 to 30 man-hours a week chasing problems that we may not know what the answer is. You know, it could be a valve in the ceiling, or boiler pressure issue, or a number of issues that, you know, we might have five or 10 issues a day at each building that we need to diagnose, troubleshoot, and maintain, but we, you know, we have them to lean on, they're monitoring it remotely, and if systems are out of whack, or we're not as efficient as we can be, they're going to come to us and say, listen, this is what we need to do, you know, and you need that, you need that, you need someone to hold accountable. And they'll be there for us, they have been, I think they'll be there in the future as Again, half of this project, a lot of people wanted to know whether this would help relieve our $4 million CIP liability, and half of this project will, half of this project cost will be reduced from our $4 million liability, so that's good. And it's a turnkey project with a single point of contact carrying all the risk. All this work will be done before the end of June, it'll be done at night, it won't interrupt any business, and they won't even, the students won't even know that Siemens was there in the morning. So all those things need to be taken into consideration when you're analyzing cost and everything.
So you just said that half of the cost of this project will be reduced in the original $4 million, so then half of it wasn't in the original $4 million?
Well, what I did is I went through the project, and then I went through the Davis and Gadrill report, and anything that was in the Davis and Gadrill report that I saw on the project, I added up. It was about $300,000 roughly, that directly comes off that Davis and Gadrill report. So I think that speaks to our responsible proactive mentality. You know, there was some skepticism when the high school project was done, you know? We did the same model moving forward, you know? We had the consulting engineers partner with Siemens, and, you know, we're pretty confident that this is going to happen the way it is, and, you know, this type of work, we'd be going down this road anyway, and this alone with our internal resources would take us, we dedicated just on this, it could take us five years to do this by ourselves. So we're really fast-forwarding into the future by getting this done now, and I couldn't think of a better way to bring our HVAC control systems up to where they need to be and at the most efficient.
And I'm a little confused by this proposal as to what the total cost of the project is.
614.
So is it the 268, 165 plus the 346, 303?
614, yep, it's 614, yep, 468.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the mechanical plus the lighting. Again, we separated that because the PSNH incentive was greater than the P for P incentive on the lighting portion. And that 134 is guaranteed to come back to you right after the project's done in June.
And is this one of those ones where you get 134,195 dollars upfront, and then, or after the project's complete, and then there's other incentives as they're measured, or no?
Nope, no, they all come upfront in this one.
Okay.
Yep. And I think it's...
Another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What would happen, I mean, you have these projected savings. What would happen if that target wasn't met?
If the target wasn't met, then that, you know, could potentially be due to the fact that, you know, we, you know, we were busier, you know, we had more events, you know, we held 3,000 events district-wide this past year. And a lot of times, we butt heads at the high school, for instance, when, you know, there might be an event or something that popped up, or, you know, we need to make the temperature, and it's not getting there based on the template schedule. Well, Siemens comes in, modifies the schedule, we get through it, and we sort of deal with things on a case-by-case basis, but there's no obligation to meet, the savings, those are the projected savings, we get the rebates, the savings aren't guaranteed, but we feel we can meet them.
I would add, Tom, that based on our experience at the high school, Siemens proposal at the high school is really conservative, based on what we actually saved, and the responsibility of staying true to the proposal is ours. So we've had a couple of situations at the high school where we had to turn on power where we didn't anticipate it, and so when that happens, you know, we're saying, we need that power for that particular reason, that heat. And so we've had to make some adjustments at the high school, but even though the adjustments were doing extremely well in terms of projected savings.
Are you finished? I just have a...
You can go.
Okay. So I'm not an expert in facilities management, but fortunately, you are. So I trust your opinion...
Thanks.
...in choosing this project. And I just want to say that, you know, obviously, the Siemens proposal that we've done at the high school has done good for us, because when you have the electric company calling to find out if you've shut down the building or whatever because you're saving so much money, that's a good thing. And I just want to identify that both Siemens and AEC has done amazing things for us this year. AEC pretty much got the ball rolling with their, our internal facilities management issues that they identified, which is why you're here, and for that, I'm eternally grateful, because it was a good move for our district, and it started us down the right path for facilities maintenance. And Siemens has done a fantastic job with the projects that they've done so far here in the high school. And I look forward to having those same types of projects done at the other schools. I think it's going to make, both companies have allowed us to make our district a lot better, and I hope that we can alleviate some of the tension and learn to play nice so that we can do what's right for our district. But I appreciate the work you've done, Brian, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more.
I have a question, sort of a broad question about, you know, we look at the enrollment issue at the two elementary schools and the possibility of changing things around configurations of schools and things of that nature. How does this project, I mean, it seems like it's more maintenance, but, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, if down the road, say we don't have the modulars at Moheramont anymore, and we're making some changes in the district, I guess I want to see how much of that is tied, this project would be tied to that, and are we, maybe, I know the incentives are attractive and everything, but I just want to make sure we're not jumping the gun if we're thinking about making some kind of, if we're getting worse to it. of, if we're getting worse tuition students in, they would consume more energy at the high school, things of that nature.
Right, your current usage can vary, and obviously, your savings will be reflected by that. This doesn't include the SAU service building or the modular at Moheramont. But what it does do is it brings our control systems, our HVAC systems, they're optimized, they're operating at 100% efficiency at all times, they're being preventatively maintained by a company that knows how to do it, they're, they have redundancy in all their people. We have, we have one call that we make, it's familiarity with the site, all those things. I, I couldn't think of a better way to become more consistent, consolidate, and I couldn't think of a better partner than Siemens. I really, I, I can't think of a better project, especially when they throw in the, you know, the four-year warranty on the lamps, seven years on the ballasts, and we're going to have a three-year preventative maintenance contract. So, you know, we're going to have district-wide HVAC preventative maintenance being done for $20,000 at those three schools, and you really can't beat it. And that frees us up to refocus our internal staff for the aesthetics, the patching, the painting, the general maintenance things that we might not be getting to, the groundswork, the beds, the gardens, the courtyards, all the things that have sort of fell by the wayside while we chase these problems. We're going to really be able to refocus our internal staff and get more value out of, out of them as well, so.
Is it possible that we'll be able to reduce the cost, because we have some outside costs of, like, landscaping and that type of thing, is it possible that those costs could be reduced as well?
Well, they all, they all would be, in theory, I think some things just haven't been being done, like, for instance, painting at the middle school. Higher level of groundswork, you know, this way, we don't have, you know, people sharing responsibilities, you know, teachers, PTO, facilities, you know, who owns it type of stuff. And we like to take all things sort of, you know, grounds and own them in facilities, and, you know, let educators concentrate on education. Another thing it'll do is balance our HVAC systems. We'll have recommended air flows in all the rooms, healthier learning environments, and, you know, I think this project is in line with our sustainable goals. The, you know, the funding for these, this audit came from the Sustainability Committee, and I think this project is consistent with that. It makes, and not only that, it makes good business sense, you know, and that's why I stand by it.
I would just like to reiterate Krista's point. I do want to thank publicly Tim and his firm, AEC. If it wasn't for Tim, this whole project wouldn't have gotten off the ground, and I think he's been an incredible community member and dedicated to making the system, the school system, a better place for his children and everyone's children, so publicly, I want to say that. I also concur, and Brian is the expert that we have in the room, and he's very strongly advocated that we go in this direction, and again, my experience with a different firm, but the similar philosophy of optimizing controls, that is where the efficiencies are. Regardless of ultimately how we use buildings, these investments are good investments. If we ended up selling something, it's a good investment because somebody would buy something that's been updated. If we utilize our buildings in a different fashion with our students, it's still an effective use of our funds. So, I support Brian's recommendation and hope that the board will as well.
I was, I was going to make a motion to accept the Siemens Energy Reduction Proposal.
Second?
Moved by Tom. Discussion?
I just have a question about financing it. My understanding is there's going to be, like, essentially, a lease arrangement?
Will we bring Sue up to the podium to talk about how we would get this work done financially?
Thank you, Brian.
I did reach out to a finance company leasing the equipment and revised the numbers based on what I gave you last time, because the proposal's a little different, and 2.17% interest rate...
Sorry.
...with a payment of $74,651 a year, for a seven-year payment, so. That would be the plan. A seven-year lease on the equipment, basically a lease, so potential savings will pay your lease for the next seven years at $74,651. Finance rate is 2.17%.
Essentially, the amount we'd be paying each year is, corresponds to the savings we'd be making...
Right.
...through these changes.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm not an engineer, and I, my family can attest, I have read more facilities reports over the last nine months, and since I've had more meetings on this. And this project, I mean, it's, in my opinion, a no-brainer, because we're going to have to, the boiler that was in the report was $90,000. That's going to be replaced with the savings, or with the incentives that we're getting anyway, and the savings pay for the project itself. I mean, what Brian was saying is we're taking $300,000 off the $4 million, this is allowing, this is our low-hanging fruit that we're taking off, where it's, you know, when we get to other things, like those heat recovery units, which are really expensive, I wish there was pay-per-performance, but this allows us to clear things off from that list and not attack our capital, which we're going to have to use on other projects where we're not going to get anything. So, it's, in my opinion, I think it's a really great proposal.
Megan?
I have a question about the lease on equipment. I want to be clear, what equipment, and what happens after seven years with that equipment?
We own it.
Okay. What, what equipment?
Well, the lighting retrofits, the new boiler, all of that's equipment.
Okay.
So, that's basically why it's a lease.
Like, changing out the lighting, like, the thing we were talking about earlier that Brian was saying about the lights would have to be changed, I mean, we're going to own our lights?
We own our lights, we own our lights, but essentially, you have a lease to, lease to own, is the way it works, yeah.
All right, so it's really a lease to own?
Right.
Okay, that helps me. Thank you.
Is there a prepayment penalty on the lease?
Not that I'm aware of.
What, for your question?
A prepayment penalty?
In case we find oil.
Yeah. In case we, someone wants to donate.
In case we get a, a windfall.
Someone says, "I really badly want to pay $614,000 for this project so the district can get it done right now."
The lease will have the option to prepay on any payment date for 100% of the remaining balance. Yes, you can prepay. It's in there.
Thank you.
Megan? The interest rate is fixed?
Yes, 2.17.
Further discussion?
Good until March 8th, actually, I should say that.
Good until March 8th?
Until March 8th, yes. Locked in.
Of this year.
Right. Because I will say that the last time, it was 2.1, 2.07, so it went up a little bit, and that was only locked in until February 1st, so.
Okay. Further?
Can I clarify a couple of points?
It's up to the superintendent, if you want to invite him to. We have a motion on the table.
The danger is that we start getting into a debate as opposed to a presentation. So, Tim, it's as long as, you know, as long as it's...
Yes.
...not adversarial.
Yeah, first off, the date for P4P has been extended through June of 2014. Right. Okay. So, you don't have to be complete this year. I'm not sure if Siemens told you that. No, they didn't. It may have been my misunderstanding. Secondly, I would, I would carefully review your procurement regulations, because you do not have a situation where you've got a proprietary or a sole-source product in a building. It's actually the opposite. You've got, you had that here in the high school, which is a completely different situation. You already had Siemens Systems here. In that case, it made a lot of sense to do what we did. There, you've got an open source, which is a non-proprietary system, and now you're taking it and you're turning it into a proprietary system. So, I would very carefully review your procurement regulations, and the lighting has absolutely no proprietary nature to it at all. Anybody can do lighting retrofits. So, my, my only comment is, why are we rushing in to accept a proposal that gets us 21% when we could potentially get 50% on a project? I'm not, we're the ones that, that really brought everything to the table. All of our reports recommend exactly what's being done, but there's a better approach, and we don't need to rush into it with a, with a proposal that's not itemized.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. So, just in terms of the viewpoint of going to sole-source here is to have one standardized interface across the district. And the fact that we've already made the investment here at the high school makes sense for us to do that, in my opinion, across the district, so that we, we're going to have the same situation later when we're talking about security, entrance, equipment. We have it in two and a half of our four schools. To me, it makes sense to use the same approach in all four schools for all the reasons that Brian has alluded to. It's, it's efficient from the maintenance perspective to have one vendor servicing all four of our buildings, and that's why I believe the sole-source piece works. In terms of timing, you know, quite honestly, I think I had 2013 in my head, but the interest rates are awesome right now, as you just heard. They went up 1/10 of 1% between now and three weeks ago, when you heard from Sue. You're not going to get better leasing rates than, than what we're, what we've been presented with tonight. It's not going to go down, it's only going to go up. And I just think that, you know, these are, these are the issues that have been addressed by the, by the district's facilities plan since before I was here, and it's time to just continue to take action and move forward.
I just have one more quick question. This might be for Brian or Sue, but does, by switching all of our schools over to the same equipment, does it give us any advantage in purchasing power if something were to go wrong? You know what I mean? Because if we're not buying boilers to Masway from this company, and something at the high school from a different company, does it give us any strength in purchasing power?
It does. Like I said, all corrective maintenance can be done by in-house, it can be done by any vendor we want, including, you know, moving forward into the future with Siemens. We do enter into an agreement with Siemens, we become eligible for their proprietary, their, their customer rebate savings, discounts, and a lot of times, Siemens will have, you know, a markup on certain things, but they'll come on-site, whether it's Pete or Jeff, we've become familiar with them, they come down, they diagnose issues. Sometimes, we'll go down to FW Web, and we'll just purchase it right from our own account. And a lot of times, that happens. So, we do qualify for discounts, we can buy things from whoever we want, we can fix things with whoever we want. So, I think that answers your question.
And?
Thank you, Tim, for that additional information. I have to say that I've lived in the district now for eight years, and I've witnessed these buildings being neglected for a long time, and I don't think we can wait any longer to do work that's important. And I also have great confidence in Brian. And we, we hire professionals, so professionals can use their expertise to our better advantage. So, I give him my support.
Anybody else? And how does the motion read? Does it read to authorize the superintendent to enter into?
To accept.
To accept the Siemens Energy Reduction Proposal.
Does that work?
Does that work? So, unanimous, could we have a vote, please? That's a unanimous vote, seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
So, the, you want me to go right into the next item, Madam Chair?
I would like to.
Okay. Under Board Action Items, a motion to approve Barrington School District tuition for the 2013-14 school year at the rate of $13,000. Sue?
In your memo, I've listed the current, the rate for Co-Brown, which is slightly higher than the rate that I'm suggesting, and the reason I'm doing that is because traditionally, that has been what the district has done for our rate to Barrington. Right now, the rate is 12.5, so I'm suggesting that we increase it by 500 and set it at $13,000 for next year.
Can you just elaborate a little bit? When we've been talking about tuition rates, and this is as much for the public, because the board has heard me say this a zillion times, the established tuition rate has got to be marketifiable, and Co-Brown is a private or semi-private school, really establishes what that market rate is. The next motion, you'll be establishing the cost per student at each level in the district, and the question that I'm often asked is, why is there a difference? And the logic is that if you establish a price too high, then tuition students would not choose to come to our district. If we establish it too low, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot, and so by using Co-Brown as a barometer of market, we get to a place where we can, you know, have a conversation with community members that say, "This is, this is the right rate for Oyster River." So, the $13,000 proposal, and the reason it works so well with Barrington is, we literally have added no staff to the high school. We've taken 64 of their students and blended them into our four grade levels, 9 through 12, and not added an English teacher, or a science teacher, or a social studies teacher, any teachers. However, if a Barrington student comes with a special ed denotion, then the, and there's costs related to that, Barrington does pay that cost. So, for example, if a student came from Barrington and they had an ed tech, Barrington pays entirely for that ed tech. So, the $13,000 is assuming that we have not hired staff, and there's no additional costs. However, if we end up hiring staff in the special ed area, Barrington gets charged that. So, this, this is the logic we've used in the past, and we've articulated in the community over the seven months that Sue and I have worked together. And by and large, I think people really do understand that, and so, we've recommended this as a logical outcome for, for next year with Barrington.
I'm confused about the next item on the agenda. That's...
Right.
Says tuition as well.
It does, and we'll get, we'll get to that and explain that it's a separate issue related to the state.
Uh-huh. All right. Krista?
Well, first, I'll make a motion to set the tuition rate for Barrington at $13,000 per student.
Second?
Thank you. And then I just had a comment.
That was moved by Krista, seconded by Tom.
So, I think the last three years, correct me if I'm wrong, we've gone up about $500 per year, correct?
Last year, I think I recommended it, but you chose to leave it.
Okay. All right, and has Co-Brown gone up about $500?
Yes, they have.
Okay. So, this also doesn't include transportation costs, right?
Right.
Which are built into our per-student costs.
Barrington's responsible for transporting their own students.
Right, or they're responsible for transporting themselves, right?
Oh, themselves.
Okay. So, I'm okay with this. I actually had a discussion with some people last night, but I guess what my question is, is, so Co-Brown is a private academy, I get it, they have, they have some things that we don't have. So, what is the tuition rate for Dover? What are the Barrington students paying out of this $13,000? Do we know that?
Don't have it off the top of my head. Somewhere around $10,000 or $11,000.
Okay, so they're still paying more?
Yeah, it's paid to. $11, yeah.
$11.
Parents pay to.
Okay. So, we've gone up a little bit on what parents have to pay... So we've gone up a little bit on what parents have to pay for kids to attend Oyster River? Because we were at about 1,500, right?
Yeah, they're kicking in the difference between Dover and, right, correct.
And are you getting a feel, Todd, that that might be a problem for some families? Because I know last year, we got two, I think, two requests for variance, and the year before we got one. We've denied them all since. But I'm concerned that if we get too far away from the Dover price, that we may be causing more trouble than it's worth.
Isn't the Dover agreement in the process of being renegotiated as well?
No, thank you, Todd. Yes, Dover has actually presented a per student cost of 13,000, 12.5 or someplace in that range. They've increased their tuition proposal significantly.
So is it possible that people might actually not have to pay much at all for them to come to Oyster?
Well, if it's based on the Dover price, it'll be the difference, so it'll actually be reduced.
But to answer your question about the sense of it, I mean, my sense is that the people who are choosing Oyster River, having to pay a little bit is actually adding to their family investment in being here. And I think it tends to create a more serious approach to coming, because you know mom and dad are putting some money into it.
Okay.
I need to just skip to the next slide for a moment, but not because I want to talk about it per se, but we list on the next slide what the cost of educating kids in each of our level schools are. And my question is, while it says it's less transportation and less food service, is it less special education?
No.
No.
So do we have a rough, do we have a number for special education?
$21,000. In respect to?
To those, that those individual 15 and change, 16 and change, and 17 and change, is that $3,000 in that number, special education? My point of asking the question is that, I've heard lots of criticism in our district that we don't charge enough for tuition students based on what it costs to educate a child in the district. However, if that number actually is much closer, because there's a chunk of $2,000 to $5,000 that's actually a special education cost, then the numbers are closer than we think.
Yeah, when we were doing the proposal for Barrington, related to this, but not exactly this, to answer your question, and we actually established a tuition rate of $20,000 for special ed students. So it's about $7,000 difference, not three or four. And then if that student required extensive one-on-one aides or an additional staff member, that's on top of that. So an aide cost us $20,000, it's possible that a special ed youngster would cost Barrington $40,000.
Correct. But my point is that this is an average. So there's an average cost. In that cost per student at elementary, middle, and high, a factor of that cost is the portion of our special ed that is our budget, is in our budget.
That's right.
So what percentage of those three numbers represents special ed is my question, because you subtract that and you may be very close to $13,000.
I think when we pulled that out and did the calculation, well, the seven was pretty much where it was when you pull that out. And then when we figure out the discount, it's about the same. So when we put them in line, we discounted that. If we were to charge for special ed, we would discount it at the same rate. Does that make sense to you?
Yes. Thank you.
So it's in line with, and the reason we calculate the second tuition that way, it's in line with the way the state calculates their tuition. So that's the same model they use when they come up with the cost per pupil, which is based on your prior year expenditures. This is based on your current budget and your current enrollment. So that's following the same model that the state uses when they come up with and publish the cost per pupil statewide. So that's this model here. Does that make sense?
Tom, you have a question?
No, pardon. So this requires a motion and a second by the Board.
I have a motion.
Motion on table.
Are you ready to vote? Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion passes.
The next item, which I said the same thing you did, Madam Chair, when I saw them right behind each other, was, this is going to be confusing.
It's confusing.
This is the amount that Sue has to calculate and report to the state. The validity of this particular number for us is, we actually have a couple of students who are not associated with Barrington, whose families choose to tuition in their students into the district. And since we don't have a global agreement with anyone other than Barrington, when a family wants to do that and they ask what the tuition rate is, I go to this number. And this is the number that we share with those individual families today. For example, we were contacted by a family outside the district, and they asked about our tuition rate, and this would be the number that Wendy would have shared with them.
So if that child had special education requirements, would there be additional fees charged?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm slightly confused still. Only that, so there's people that live in this forest park place, which I don't even know where that is, at UNH, which I'm assuming is in Durham.
Okay, I presume.
Yeah, okay. So why don't those people go to our schools as Durham residents? I don't understand that part.
They would. If they live in Durham, they're residents.
Well, it says, the town of Durham seeks a payment.
UNH makes a contribution to the district for the education of these children that live in UNH housing.
But they live in Durham.
But they don't pay property tax.
But they don't.
Well, if you rent a house in Durham, you don't pay.
But the university doesn't pay any taxes.
Oh, that's it? Okay.
That's why the university provides post-secondary education to our staff. They have a $400,000 pool of money that's dedicated to Oyster River in lieu of paying taxes that allows our staff to take courses at UNH. So that's the way that they try to give value added to the community.
So this is on-campus housing, which is the difference between someone who rents a house in Durham. Okay, I get it now. All right, fine. Staff part was just confusing to me as to why they weren't just Durham residents, but got it now. Thanks.
Other questions for Sue?
I do, sorry. How many students do we have that fall, not like, forget about the University of New Hampshire for a minute, not that they're not important, because that'll be the next thing that's in the paper, but how many students do we have tuitioning into the district from other places?
No more than a half dozen.
Not even. I think there's only two that choose to come here and pay the full.
And are they staff members' children, or?
No.
One is.
One is actually from as far away as Manchester. And another one is a staff member's child. And you established that a staff member's child who lives, the staff member lives out of the community, would have to pay the established tuition rate. And so we've been doing that. There's no discount for a staff member?
There is on a prior agreement, and some of them are still under that, but that's no longer for new. So the children that are in the system that are under that agreement will follow through. And we do have a few in that, that there is a discount. I think, is it one, I think it's mentioned there. Is it 1/3?
Yeah, 1/3.
Yeah. So we have a few children that are still under that.
Currently, and for the last year, there hasn't been.
I don't think we have a motion on this.
This is just in, oh, okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept.
Proposed tuition rate?
Yeah, sure.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Al. Back in, you had a question?
Yeah. I'm very interested in learning more about this payment in lieu of taxes. And that's an agreement between the town of Durham. Oyster River Corp. does no say in this, right?
I don't believe that we were a participant in that discussion. I think that's the town of Durham and the university.
How long ago was this established?
Oh, I can do some research, but I think many years ago. And I think it's, I'm not, just talking out of what I've heard, is just something in line with the fact that these facilities would generate a lot of children that would come to Oyster River schools and impact our enrollment. Am I correct, Tom, when I say that? So in lieu of that, they've paid the town something to offset that.
So legally, they don't have to really do anything.
Correct.
So this is sort of a goodwill, a good will.
Discussion, motion.
Okay. Because it's not really in lieu of taxes, they don't have to pay taxes.
Right.
So it's really more of a goodwill.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they recognize there's a burden, you know, we have to, they have to contribute.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. And the next item on your agenda is, I'm sorry.
The ever-popular calendar.
Great, the ever-popular calendar. Really not asking you to take action this evening. We're trying to treat the calendar sort of the way that we treat policy and give you a chance to live with it for a couple of weeks before you have to take action. The significant difference in the proposed calendar is, it does away with the half-day workshops and replaces them with six full-day workshops. It also is using, and Carolyn is the expert on this, and she's away tonight, but, so that's another reason to have it as a second read, but that wasn't the intention, using the statute that allows you to count instructional hours in lieu of days. And so Carolyn used that in order to break away from the model of the half-day workshops. We haven't had any discussion with the public at large in relation to this issue, and it may be something that we will get calls on, because calendars are very important parts of people's lives. To get it into tonight would be to anticipate that you would take action in March, when we meet again. And the reason that I would like you to take action in March is then parents can plan their summers accordingly. So if you would take this with you this evening and study it and be ready to ask questions, we'll be prepared to answer them in our next meeting.
Can I just make a statement?
Sure.
On that question. Next time I see Carolyn Eastman, I might actually kiss her, because this is fantastic. I think for the last two years, I've asked for this to be considered, because just as a working parent, the half-days, I spend probably what I make providing childcare for my kids for those half-days every single month. And to have it on a Friday, to make it a long weekend, to have it be predictable for me and for a lot of other working parents, is a lot easier for something to deal with. Not to mention the fact that I think it's probably a lot easier for teachers to have a teacher workshop that's an entire day, rather than three hours or two hours, or whatever it works out to be. I think it's going to be a win-win situation for the students and for the teachers. I'm thrilled with this calendar. I was seriously almost in tears when I saw it. It's just, I think it's a huge step forward for our district, it's a huge step forward for the kids, and it takes our parents into consideration, which I think we definitely need to do.
Well, I would offer that the guild participated in the conversation with zest. They, Carolyn put out for comments, and within 24 hours, she had more comments than she could read in a weekend. And calendars are of great interest, not just to staff, but to parents. And I would tell you that if we had a dozen people in the room, it's unlikely that a dozen people would come to the same consensus on the calendar. As much as you love it, Krista, there's probably going to be somebody out there who thinks it's the worst thing since, you know, sliced bread. And they're very, very difficult animals to put together. So I'm hopeful that your response is the response we get from the parental community as well. And the teachers were great in giving us their opinions. And actually, because of them, we restructured some of this proposal to reflect some of the issues that neither Carolyn and I were aware of at the central office. So, you know, I think it was a great conversation internally as well, I guess is how I would put it.
Can I just ask one question that Carolyn could bring back for the March?
Sure.
Is to know, and I mean, I could probably research this myself, but she probably knows off the top of her head, for our February and April vacation weeks, if they coincide with Massachusetts or Maine, and if they coincide with Dover?
Maine, Massachusetts, and Dover.
Right. But the driving factor is what the prokeal or the vocational schools' schedules are.
Right.
And unfortunately, what Massachusetts is doing is...
No, it's just because some schools in New Hampshire go with Massachusetts and Maine, and some schools go with...
Right. But people love it when we don't go with Mass, because they get to go to the mountains of New Hampshire.
Right. Yeah, that's not why I'm asking. I'm asking because there are parents who work in other districts as teachers that would want to know that answer.
Could I encourage Board members over the course of your processing this, if you do have questions? If you would just drop me and Carolyn an email, so that when we bring it back to you, we can have that kind of background information ready?
Sure.
So we don't need a motion on this?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the poll. Or John, did you have a?
No, I was just curious as to why Thanksgiving break is a five-day weekend instead of a four-day weekend.
I'll write that down.
Nothing gets done that week.
Sometimes it's the way the calendar falls, John.
It's usually a half-day.
Oh, that's an earlier lease Wednesday.
Maybe Thanksgiving falls on Wednesday this year.
We'll have the answer to that. Consistency, okay.
We're moving on to the policies. And I would suggest the first three we take as a group, because there really is no change just in cross-references.
Motion to approve policy ECAF, I can't read it, it's small, audio and video surveillance on school buses, policy EDCA, employee use of electronic communication devices, policy EEAEA, and that is not an eye test, mandatory drug and alcohol testing school bus drivers.
For first read.
For first read.
That was moved by Krista, seconded by Al.
Ann.
Discussion. Yes.
Why is policy EEAEA called mandatory drug and alcohol testing of school bus drivers when it's all about medical examination and criminal background examination? Shouldn't it have a broader title?
It could. I think the reason it has that title is that's the coding that the New Hampshire School Board Association and your National Association provides for that. So it really goes back to the law that was passed on random drug testing of drivers. So if you don't change the code, that's fine. If you want to change the title to something more encompassing, I don't think that changes anything.
There are other policies that address the driver's license and criminal background check, right? It's all this one policy.
This is it, yeah.
Well, look at that at our next policy meeting.
Okay.
Al.
Do we have cameras on our buses?
Well, I learned the answer to this question during this particular meeting. We actually do them randomly. So it's possible that a camera could be on a bus. There's not a camera on every bus, every time.
And they're only inside?
Correct.
Further discussion for first read? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion passes.
Motion to approve policy JG, assignment of students to classes and grade levels.
Second?
Moved by Krista, seconded by Tom. There is no substantial change to this. Again, cross-reference, and it's for first read.
Isn't there a change by not letting the, giving an appeal process? Is that taken out? It says that it's going to be, assignments will be made by the principals in each building, and then there was a clause at the end saying that each principal, or this decision may be appealed to the superintendent and the school board, and that's been taken out. I didn't understand why that was taken out.
You're right. There's a change. I think we decided that anything can be appealed to the superintendent and the school board.
Generally, issues of discrimination and that type of thing end up at the school board level if that ultimately is the end. Generally speaking, when appeals are made, you, the... you, the appeal process stops at the superintendent level.
Which should be. I mean, I just didn't want to make sure that that's in there.
Don't we have a policy for, process for appeals?
That I don't, I can't...
I'm pretty sure we do. But it's a separate policy. We might want to find out which one that is and cross-reference to this policy instead.
Thanks, Krista.
With that input? Any further? Can we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. One in the, John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy ICA, school calendar for first read.
Second.
Where the change there is, that specifies in the regular meeting, this we felt if... We could just as well do it in a special meeting if that's what's being held.
Yeah, basically, we were trying to get to a place where we could get timing, where predictable timing for a proposed calendar would happen. And rather than stay to a specific month or give a deadline that we couldn't meet, we decided that what made sense was that we would present the calendar like we did tonight in the winter with the idea that by the time winter was over, we would have a proposed calendar for parents.
An accepted calendar.
And accepted and approved, yeah.
Yeah. Who moved the calendar?
Krista and Al.
Seconded by Anne.
Anne. Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion passes. Then we have gifts to schools.
Motion to approve policy KCD, gifts to schools.
Second.
Krista and Anne. This we had... We had discussion on this. We wanted to make sure that the gifts fall in line, especially if they are tech... Gifts, that they fit into our adopted plans rather than something out of the blue, so to speak. And we had the superintendent is looking into this. And we thought the school board should be notified of all gifts so we can say, "Thank you."
I think the significant piece of this change was that the randomness of what was happening with the four principals. You know, Todd could be using one set of procedures, or practices at the high school, Jay at the middle school, both elementary schools. And so centralizing it so that the superintendent was able to sit with Todd or sit with Jay and go over what the gift is and be able to articulate the same process and procedure. And then making sure the board was aware of whatever gifts were given. I mean, quite honestly, in my previous two districts, there was an item on the agenda every, every week that says, you know, "Thank you to, you know, X car dealership for their donation of the car to the shop and thank you to, you know, Mrs. Smith for $100 donation to the yacht program." And so it was just a way of recognizing, I mean, most of the gifts the system gets are going to be that kind of gift. But we also were concerned about larger contributions and making sure, for example, if they impacted the facilities plan, that Brian was brought into the discussion. So it just was a way of trying to make sense of the gifting practices that we have. We really do want to thank everybody who puts even a modest amount of money or time into the system. So this is the place to do it when the cameras are running and let people know that we appreciate what they're doing for us.
Krista.
I don't disagree with what the policy committee is saying. My only concern is, last time we revised this policy, we had, and for some reason it sticks out, substantial discussion regarding it. And the way that I...
The policy?
Yeah, the way that I can tell is because it took three meetings to approve it. And so I'll go back and look just to make sure that we don't reinvent the wheel here. But the policy looks fine to me. I did read it over like three times, so.
I think Jim alluded to some of this. I felt that, you know, when we met, you know, we had this dollar amount of $5,000. And it's somewhat, in many ways, an arbitrary number. And I was trying, my greatest concern are gifts that perhaps maybe are less than $5,000 but have some kind of impact on our operations. And, you know, for example, like Promethean boards, you know, may cost, an individual Promethean board is less than $5,000, but it has impact in terms of technology integration, software, training, shipment of the product to the district. So I run it, I felt it was important that we had in here language added that gave, you know, really said to the superintendent, "You know our plans, you have the broader macro view. When, if you see something come through that you think could have an impact, even if it's less than $5,000, try to bring it to our attention." Because that, I think things like that are very... I think the way the policy was written, it didn't accommodate for that situation. So I think hopefully that will be good and will keep us consistent with whatever plans we have for.
With that, any further discussion?
Losing. Yep, okay.
Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands? Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy GBA, equal opportunity employment.
And that's really just the review of the policy. The only thing changed is adding the Oyster River Cooperative School to the district. That was moved by Krista.
Yep.
Seconded by Anne. Yes.
So maybe I just haven't noticed this before. It's never been reviewed before. Is this a brand-new policy?
It is not. I think in the past, it has not always been recorded when they were reviewed.
Yeah, it is required in terms of federal government.
I would think so. So I was surprised to see it look...
Right, and this is the way, the only...
We can dangle the wheel here.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are several policies similar to this one that Jim advised us to really, you know, there is a law outlining it and there's very little change that we would make. And so I think that you'll see that on a few of these policies, that all we did was add our district name. Eventually, that was the only change.
Further discussion? Could I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy GBA, A and R1, sexual harassment, employee-staff inform.
Second.
And again, this is required. We have added the cross-references. Many, many pages. We have the form.
Again, you know, as Megan alluded to earlier, this is one that's required by the federal and state governments and is one that's designed by attorneys to make sure it complies. So we recognize our district, but everything else is really the boilerplate that comes from attorneys.
So...
I just want to mention too, the cross-reference our documents. We do not need to vote on those.
Correct, just the policy.
Ready? Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy GBB, employee involvement in decision-making.
Second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Anne.
And the good example of this particular policy in action was the calendar. You know, as Carolyn reached out, she got more feedback than probably she anticipated. And it was as varied as it could possibly be and she filtered it. I think best practice is always to reach out and seek employees' opinions when you're going to impact them. So this policy just affirms that behavior.
Can I have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Motion to approve our first-read policy GBE, employee rights and responsibilities.
Second.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Anne. There are some changes on this. We took out some language or vocabularies that were kind of vague. We added in accordance with board policies and the New Hampshire state statutes. And...
I think that the other piece here was, if we didn't understand the language, we decided that it probably no one else would. It's a policy that is dated in terms of how it's structured and the language of the day is not language we would use today. So we tried to make it more straightforward and reflect language that we all use and understand.
Further discussion? Could I have...
Just interesting how it really does look so dated. It just reads so...
Yeah.
Could I have a show of hands, please?
Did that hit me?
We're all...
Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative.
Motion to approve for adoption, policy JLD, school guidance and counseling program.
Second.
Moved by Krista. Seconded by Anne. And... Nothing except we add the...
Cross-reference.
The job description. Or cross-reference the job description.
We make some other changes.
We did.
Cut out that.
Oh, we crossed out.
Too well-crossed out of it.
Yeah.
An academic...
We crossed out the language in academic performance, social awareness, and career planning and felt that the endings and ends of guidance council are responsible for developing a program or plan that defines student success really encompassed all of those and it was a bit redundant. So...
And the job description talks about...
Those very same issues.
Those very same issues that we crossed out.
Well, I just think the other last sentence was kind of unnecessary too. All policies are going to be reviewed in accordance to our review process. I mean, if we're going to put this, that sentence, you're going to have to go back and put it in every single policy we have.
Right.
So it's sort of...
Further discussion?
Or put a cross-reference. All policies are going to be reviewed by the policy.
Could we have a show of hands, please?
I'm not doing that. I'm not going to policy committee anymore.
Motion to delete policy EDVA, maintenance and control of instructional materials, and policy EHC, calendar events.
And the, again, going back to that idea of dated language, the maintenance, control of instructional materials really was talking exclusively about textbooks. And if you walked into a high school today, you would see many different materials being used as resources by teachers. And so that particular policy just didn't fit how we actually operate. And the calendar events policy, EHC, is a policy that when we sent to the communications committee, we all agreed, didn't make any sense whatsoever. And so deleting it was the recommendation of the communications committee.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. Seven in the affirmative. John in the affirmative. Motion passes and that's the end of policies.
So just as a side comment, I have a good friend who's an attorney, Bruce Smith. And what he would be celebrating tonight because policy manuals are always added to, never deleted from. So it's appropriate that occasionally we do delete policies that are no longer timely. So I'll call him tomorrow and he'll be a happy camper.
Okay. District reports. Assistant Superintendent, he's not here. Superintendent, report.
Very good, thank you, Madam Chair. I have to say that my first deliberative session was last night. I was just incredibly intrigued by the whole process. I've never been involved in a process where the board took control of the budget before like all of you did. I thought you all did an incredible job in your parts of the presentation. It was really, it was really quite interesting. This is definitely unique to Oyster River. It's not something that is mandated by statute or directed by anyone. Your ownership of the budget in the last presentation last night was pretty obvious. And I think the votes last night really were votes of support in your knowledge of what you were doing and what you were promoting to the community. So I have to say, thank you very much. I thought you did a terrific job. And then, you know, just in terms of the town meetings and Sue knows how I walked into those a little bit nervous because it had never been done before. And we kind of struck out in Durham and then we kind of struck out again in Lee. And I was ready to say, well, I guess, you know, this effort wasn't really well-received. And then we got to Madbury and we filled their council chamber with 14 very interested Madbury residents. So I think they validated Sue's recommendation to me. And I think we'll just do it again next year and figure out a way to get Durham and Lee people to those meetings because I have to say the Madbury people really impressed me. And they had great questions and they were engaged. And the select people that were there sat as citizens and community members, not as select people. And they had good questions and I just, I just enjoyed it. It was really well-done.
You're saying this just because you live in Madbury?
It's like the welcome to Madbury party.
Yes, as a new resident of Madbury, I really want to come in and I select Madbury. That's what I meant to say.
I heard that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
After the deliberative, there was a community member who had raised a concern. And I'm not sure this should go on a future discussion item, but there's been a practice, not always consistently in this district, where like a postcard gets mailed out with a lot of key dates. And that there was a sentiment that perhaps not everyone knew when the deliberative was and when some of these town meetings were. So I'm just wondering if, you know, maybe at some point in the next year, if we want to have a discussion about how to handle it. I know sometimes it's been handled by the communications committee. And that could be their charge. I just, I thought I needed to raise that as a concern.
True. And just, you know, in terms of that concern, because you sent it to me and I appreciate that, Megan. Wendy goes personally to each school legally by hour charter. We post in the schools. But she also gives the dates to the, each town and their responsibilities to post it in the town. I think that any idea like one you're promoting, Megan, you know, as long as we feel like we can afford to do it, I think, you know, goes to communication and we'll figure out a way to make it happen. But you may recall, every single meeting that I've done, from the first one in October, I was announcing all of the successive meetings. And we certainly published it. But what I've learned in my job, and Al's heard me say this before, as communications chair, is no matter how many times you attempt to share information, dates, meetings, and so forth, there's always going to be something, someone who says, "I didn't know that." But doesn't mean you don't keep trying because that's what I've done for, you know, 35 years is to keep... is keep on trying, trying to figure out a way to make people aware, whether it's electronic or whether it's the old-fashioned way. I think that we did a lot more deliberate outreach this year, and it doesn't mean we're perfect. We'll continue to figure out ways to refine it and expand our information sharing as we move forward together.
Have a follow-up? The other comment I just remembered was that there was no mention, the deliberative of the upcoming candidate, the candidates' forum. And this individual thought it would be helpful if that was announced, the deliberative. Perhaps this should be announced tonight as well.
Candidates' forum.
The people running for school board, they will have a candidates' forum.
Which is which night?
Which is February 20th.
And that is held here?
Here, I think it will, well, I'm not sure of the details.
At 7:00, February 20th, there's a candidates' night at Oyster River High School. Is that what you said?
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful, we may as well just keep going here, to have it on the de-cat, you know, some advertisement.
Sure. We could put a front boy, Todd.
We only have a dead time.
We'll put it on the high school sign as well. And John and Todd, I had sent you an email about the possibility of the Senate and civics classes generating their questions and then filtering the questions so that the candidates could have them in advance. Is that something that you guys...
That's actually been a practice of recent years, and that is the intent. But that's, just to be clear, that's different than what you're talking about.
Right.
That's a PTO-sponsored event. There is one during the school day, which is hosted by a city ed classes, which questions are prepared ahead of time and given to the candidates.
Will that be the morning of the 20th, or has that date not been set?
To my knowledge, that date is not going to set.
Usually marked.
City ed classes yesterday, and they said, that's right, we need to schedule it.
Yeah, soon.
And if I recall, we also have city ed students asking the questions, because I got to do that two years ago, and look at me now.
There you go, John.
Another thing that we historically do at the deliberative session at the beginning is announce the school board candidates that are running, which we didn't do last night because it didn't dawn on me till right now. So we might, I don't have those names, but we might want to do that if we can get ahold of them tonight.
I don't have all three names.
I think I do.
You do. Would you like to say who's running?
Yes, I'm running. Kenny Rotner is running, and Carl Piedmont is running.
Thank you.
So three running for the two upper seats.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a question or comment. Before I forget this, Todd, can you, like, when the, when the student senate comes up with that daytime date, can you get this guy send that on the Facebook, blurb, whatever? Just so any parents, because it's, I thought it was really interesting watching the students question us last year. And so, I can't remember if, I think they filmed it, didn't they? So I just wanted to give adults in the community a chance to watch the kids in action, because it was really cool.
Great. Thank you.
So, anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
No, Madam Chair.
The business administrator, have any, so do you have anything? No? Then, John?
All right, well, as you all know, this is my second to the last school board meeting. And you, a while ago, told Mr. Allen and I that we need to create policy or regulation, BBBF-r, which is the student representative to the school board regulation. So over the next two weeks of the high school, we're going to be advertising, trying to get prospective student representatives to the school board to sign up. Every prospective rep needs 25 signatures plus a teacher's signature on a petition in order to be able to run. The week after February vacation is dedicated to campaigning. And then we will hold elections for the student rep on the same day that the actual school board elections are held. The rep spot is open to current sophomores and juniors, and I'm sure you're going to get someone absolutely wonderful, because there are a lot of absolutely wonderful people in this district. I believe, did we submit the regulation to Dr. Morris?
Yes, I have the draft from the policy committee.
So that's going off to the policy committee, and you'll probably see that at some point in the near future. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Big shoes to fill.
Any other reports? Announcements and commendations from the district.
Good evening, Jay Rashad Middle School. I got some exciting news from our eighth-grade language arts teachers, Linda Reeve and Susie Renner. We had 35 students that actually were given scholastic writing awards through the National Writing Project, which is exceptional, of course, great work by LA teachers, and of course, our students. Only 16 gold keys are given throughout the state, and we were actually, four students received those, and those students are actually automatically put onto the national contest, so that's really exciting. We had one American Voices Award. There were only five given in the state, so that's really exciting as well. 15 silver keys, only 70 are given across the state, so we had 15 of those students. We also had 16 honorable mentions, 85 are given throughout the state. So, you know, our percentages are exceptional with that. We also had one student, and as I joked with Linda Reeve, every May we go, last May we went up for the first time, and we'll go up again this year. We actually take a school bus up with the students, and I joke, we take over Plymouth State College for the evening due to all the great writing of our students. So next week, next Thursday and Friday night, our drama club, led by Julie Wodolski and Cindy Douglas, the drama club play this year is the Night at the Wax Museum, and that'll be next Thursday night and Friday night as well at 7:00, so if you're looking for something to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Allen from the high school. Tonight, we had the eighth-grade parent orientation night. It was great. We had, that's why I was a little bit late, sorry. We had about 250, 300 parents here to learn about the transition to high school. Great opportunity for people to come in. They met the guidance counselors, talked about our program. A lot of enthusiastic faces in the audience. For those parents that were unable to be here tonight, we have put a link on our webpage called prospective students, and the intent of that is to provide information to students who have not been here yet, but information that will help them understand what's going on. It includes information such as our program of studies in terms of our course offerings, and kind of outlines what the typical course selection process would be. In addition, there's some wonderful videos there that I would encourage people who haven't had the opportunity to be in our school to check out, just to give you a feel for Oyster River High School. So I would encourage people to check that out. Second thing I just want to mention, first semester grades are now posted and up and on Power School, and I certainly would encourage parents to check those out, as well as students to check those out. Generally, good news, but, you know. So anyway, that's, that's, that's information there. And I did have one award that I want to give tonight. You may recall, a few months ago, I actually, it might have been in the, I guess it was in the fall, it was October, I came to you to tell you that we had a student who made it in the National Merit Scholar Program to semifinalists. Just to kind of give you some background, every year, about 1 and 1/2 million students in the United States take the PSAT. Out of that, about 50,000 get recognized. Out of that, 16,000 get known as semifinalists, and out of that, a significantly smaller number get known as finalists. We happen to have one of those at Oyster River High School, and so I want to take the opportunity to congratulate John Parsons. I'm sure he'll, I'm sure he'll tell you about it before he goes, but he's also headed off to Washington DC in March to represent the state of New Hampshire in the Youth Senate Scholarship as well, so...
Presidential scholar?
No.
No, that's, that's a different thing, but actually, I'll let you tell about that. You're also a presidential scholar, correct?
I got nominated for that. I have to fill out the application.
So it's, so I guess what I'm telling you is you have greatness in your midst.
Is it suitable for framing?
Definitely.
I can find something to do with it.
That's great.
Your mom's scrapbooking for you, John.
She's not much of a scrap.
Anybody else? Then we got to the board.
Just to commend Dave Irvin for WERZ Music Award he got from WERZ. We conducted the Boston Symphony Orchestra as part of that award, and I just think that he creates miracles on such a regular basis that we forget they're miracles, you know? He's just an extraordinary talent. We're so lucky to have him.
Wonderful. Krista?
I have a few commendations. I wanted to commend, in case you missed it last night, we rewarded our distinguished service awards to two very deserving, deserving women. Catherine Fisher, who does the naturalist program at the Masway Elementary, and Lisa Allenson, who does a lot of things in our district to make our district better. So please, if you see them out in the community, congratulate them. On January 31st, we had a power outage at the high school, middle school, and SAU building, and within two and a half hours, hour and a half...
Hour and a half.
It was resolved, and during that entire time, classes were completely in session. Students were where they were supposed to be. So a huge commendation to the administrators and to Brian and his staff for keeping things moving, and for the students for not panicking, unlike their parents who went to Facebook mayhem. So good job to everybody involved. And the last thing I wanted to do, since Tom enjoys my kid stories so much, I thought I'd read this one. Let's see, yesterday, there was a lockdown at the high school, and I heard it went very well, and I received, my son is in pep, and I received this note from his teacher, which I thought was absolutely adorable, considering the seriousness of the issue and how important it is for these tiny little kids in this big school. It was really amusing to get this email. So it says, "Hi, Cub families. Today, Tuesday, February 5th, we had a lockdown at our school. Over the intercom, they play a European alarm which signals a cease for lockdown. We tell the kids that we're playing a school-wide hide-and-seek game, and they have to be very quiet. We all hid behind my desk with shades and doors locked and closed with the lights off and quietly read books. The kids did great, and they all felt we won hide-and-seek because no one found us." So I thought it was absolutely adorable, and my son came running through the house as soon as he got home, saying that they played the best game of hide-and-seek, and no one found them. And I had no idea what he was talking about until I got to seeing that. So good job, especially to the pep kids. They won the hide-and-go-seek game.
I would like to add to Krista's commendation to the district and how they responded during the power outage. I, what doesn't occur to all of us is that there's a very busy operation that goes on starting at crack of dawn through the noon hour making food. And I don't know what our food service workers did to create food without power, but I am sure they made something edible.
I heard that it was actually better than normal. Did something fantastic.
I'll pass it on to Doris.
Open flame.
Anybody else? Discussion item, security at middle school and high school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, you know, the recent incidents in Connecticut really reignited our conscious effort to make sure that our plans were up to date. And as I shared earlier with the board, within the first two weeks, all the principals had their crisis plans current. And then, you know, the tragedy happened in Connecticut, and we invited our chiefs of police in the three towns, as well as the university police chief, to review our plans and protocols, and they felt that we probably had as good a written plan as we could, we could. But again, in terms of improvement, anything made by man always is imperfect, and one of the things that we really noted as something of immediate concern is our access to the middle school and the high school. You all know that our elementary schools use a video/audio system. The doors are locked, and if somebody comes in during the workday, they have to push a button. The secretary or the principal sees who it is, asks them what they're for, and then almost always, of course, it's legitimate, and they're led into the building. But our middle school and high school have no such security. At any given moment, anyone can walk into the buildings. All of the side doors are locked. I don't want to give you the, represent that, but the front door has no security. There's no video system, there's no automatic lock system, and there's no audio system. Todd and Jay and Brian and Sue and I sat down and said, you know, this is really an untenable situation. You know, as much as Todd and Jay have routed traffic through their offices, nothing, there's no barrier to anyone coming into either one of those schools at any point during the school day. So we felt that that was something that we needed to address immediately, rather than wait until another budget year. And so I had Brian seek out bids. Happens, as I said earlier, that the, one company does two and a half of our buildings, as I say it, because they don't have the complete system in in one of the buildings. And the cost of that is going to cost approximately $10,600. And, you know, the, the, we all agree at the management level, this is a priority. And so I asked Jay and Todd and Brian to identify accounts within their purview that we could go forward with this immediately. And all three of them identified accounts that they felt would be appropriate and forwarded those to Sue. And what that means is something that we had planned a year ago, that the three administrators would have used that money for, gets set aside in lieu of what we think is a more important priority, which is the security of the high school and the middle school. So as I was saying to the chair earlier today, this isn't necessarily an action item for the board, because you've given me the authority to do this work, but more importantly, it's a communication to our communities that we are reprioritizing money within this budget in order to accomplish this task as soon as possible. And Brian, if you'd like to step to the podium, you can talk about the proposal and let the, let the board and community know what our intentions are.
Obviously, the most important thing that we do here is the safety and security of our kids. Starting last summer, we sort of, I got here in April, we started identifying, you know, what we have, what we're doing, who manages it, what vendors do we have, and how we can bring it to where it needs to be, you know? Our servers at the end of life, what are we capable of, all those things. After New Town, we, like Dr. Moore said, I've sat in on all the emergency management plan meetings at each school. We've identified, you know, we're not, we're not going to have a one-size-fits-all approach. We're going to each school, identifying their specific needs based on what they do. And like, like Dr. Moore said, the high school and the middle school right now, high school is the only school with cameras, but high school, middle school, they have card access at the front doors, but there's no system to manage it internally. So what I'm proposing here is the Aphone technology, which will tap into our existing card access system. We'll have a duplex station at each secretary's desk. So there'll be two screens at the high school, two at the middle school, one for each secretary. So if, they can cover for each other if they're out. And we'll identify who's at the door. We can talk to them, we can see them. What I've done in the past is visitors, if somebody in the building is expecting a visitor, they usually email the front office or security prior to them arriving as a second backup confirmation, and that's what we'd like to see implemented as well. Got a few quotes. Burns is in our buildings, in some of our buildings. They didn't wire the high school because the electrical contractor that did the renovation was paid to do it. So again, another example of two or three vendors. We're going to try to consolidate that over the summer. I have some money in my capital improvement plan that you've seen, about $50,000. So over the summer, we're going to really look at it globally and try to centralize it and manage it and get the most out of that money. But for right now, we feel that letting people come into the high school, middle school, and funneling them into the office isn't how we want to do it. We want to stop them at the front door like we do at the elementary schools, and this is what it costs to get there. Got multiple bids and...
Proposals. Proposals.
Proposals, I'm sorry. And they're right around the same amount of money. Burns is already in our school. They're close by. They've been in business for over 30 years. They do an integrated card access, cameras, security alarm monitoring. But just because we go with them on this doesn't mean that they have to be the global partner that we use in the summertime moving forward. This isn't proprietary stuff here. So, question?
Obviously, this is like 10 bucks a student, something we should definitely be doing. I don't think just funneling people to the office is very effective for security. That being said, we have open campus at the high school. I'm kind of curious as to what kind of effect this would have on the traffic at the high school.
Let's invite Todd to answer that, because we actually had that conversation, John.
So I think the question is, how do we manage these systems outside of the 8 to 4 when somebody's not...
No, question is on open campus. Todd has the answer.
Oh, okay. I mean, as you know, John, we have trained everybody to go through the front office anyway. And that is really what, in order to make the open campus concept work, and I don't like to use the term "open campus," that we have the concept of free periods, and kids that have parental permission can be released during those free periods. So it's really not an open campus, because it's only juniors and seniors who meet the eligibility requirements. But the way the process works is all of their doors are locked, so nobody can get into the building through any of the side doors. And anybody coming or going signs in and out through the main office. I wouldn't see that changing in any way with this. What would change would be they would come to the door, Mrs. Mealy or Mrs. Richardson would look at the monitor, and they'd see, oh, there's John. And you say, can I come in? Buzz. John comes in, because they know you. You come in, you still go through the same process of signing in, just like you always did. And certainly, would there be times during the day where, like at lunch, where it might be a little more traffic? Yes. And we'll probably hear a lot of buzz, 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 and so forth. And I'm certainly open to looking at that open, that free period concept. And maybe it's something we need to look at moving forward. But I personally do not see it as a security risk. I see, frankly, in many ways, it's by legitimizing it, we're having a lot less of those side doors being propped open and so forth. And I see that the front main entrance is, it's functioning better this year than it did last year. So...
And we talked about the side doors, and, you know, historically, those would be places that would, you know, have rocks in them to keep them open. I think that what we're also experiencing since the Connecticut incident is people being far more diligent about making sure those doors are locked and closed. You know, teachers are observing doors more diligently. Administrators are watching that. So I think what we're seeing is a heightened awareness of that issue. And I think that the staff will respond in a positive manner once everybody knows what the protocols are. This will still allow staff with their key cards to enter the various doors that they currently enter, but this is for public entrance and exit.
Thank you.
How does it work after hours?
This is a wide-open campus after hours. And, you know, I have to give Brian credit in terms of trying to get some kind of control over it. People ask to use the facility. He registers the use, and they're provided access. So we know who's being, who's in the building at any given point. And he's done a really good job of holding people accountable, so. But, you know, that's the inherent tension in a schoolhouse. All of our schools are public. I mean, by your decision as a board and the support of the communities, these are public schoolhouses. And so what we're trying to do is make them as safe as possible when we have our students in session. And then, you know, things like after-school programming, say at MoHaramet, we would issue a card to the person who's in charge of that and give them access to the building and have the kids come in through the more appropriate door. So there's going to be a learning curve, a culture change. We're not going to deny access, but we're going to try to have people maintain certain protocols when they're using the building.
Would those be programmed keys, like a hotel that expire?
Yeah, we have the ability to give those keys out that we use, but they can be, they can be as restricted as, you know, next Thursday from 7 to 9. And Brian, Brian has that kind of ability. Recurring use by different community groups, he can program their keys, so it's every Thursday from 7 to 9. So he has, he has that ability now.
Right.
Megan?
I had several questions. One was online with Ann's about the buildings. I know for, well, recently, I've noticed MoHaramet's been locked all the time, pretty much. Is that what we're doing, is our new...
Right, so if somebody wants to use the MoHaramet School, they've contacted Brian. He gives them the key. So the buildings are tighter than they used to be.
So the elementary schools are going to be locked all the time? Is that correct?
Yeah, the elementary schools are. And the middle school and the high school are really different animals as far as after-school activity.
So it would be really not, not as accurate a picture to say they're locked all the time, because we have rec groups. For example, we have men's basketball that play at Masway.
They still have a key?
Yeah, they have card access, yeah.
They would be given card access, because we know that they're using it.
They used to be open all the time. And like, you would go in for basketball, open the door and go in. But now you have to wait for the coach, who has the card, and they're locked.
So more protocol, but not to the point where we're saying you can't use the building.
And also, they're, at the high school and the middle school, they're only allowed in certain entrances. So you go into the gym, but you can't get by the fire doors and the four corners. Same at the middle school as well.
I have kind of, I sent out an email a while ago with a lot of different questions. Are we, are we checking to make sure the locks, our doors, are working, you know, closets, bathrooms?
Yes.
Have we done an audit to ensure that if we are in a lockdown situation, that we can utilize that?
Yeah, we're doing it at the site level with the principals. We also make rounds every night, and the police department in Durham goes around every night and checks the doors for...
But I also had to add, and it's not just Durham, the Lee Fire, Lee Police Chief and the Medbury Police Chief are taking this equally seriously. I've had two meetings with the chiefs myself, and I met today, for example, with the Medbury Police Chief. And he has an activity all planned during vacation, utilizing the state police, county police, Durham police, in an activity where they are trained to that facility. So the, I have to say that the police response in the three communities has been really outstanding.
So these systems that we have, the ones that we have existing and the ones we're planning on, if these systems were compromised, is there some kind of alarm or some kind of automatic trigger that could happen?
I guess I would need to know more about how they were compromised. I mean, like, if a door's left open, would we know about it?
No, I'm talking about what happened at the school, Newtown. If that happened here, I mean, is there a way we can, you know, I don't know exactly what happened. I just want to know, is there some kind of, like, panic button or some kind of thing that could automatically, you know, bring the SWAT team in?
Just to give it the example, Brian, and tell me if this is true for the schools. But in my office, if I enter my office even with my key, and I don't actively engage the alarm, Durham police are aware of it instantly. And if they show up, we get charged 175 bucks for the visit. Is there a alarm system that goes out to the police departments if the buildings are violated?
Yes.
One last question. How, are we, are we going to practice lockdowns more frequently now in our schools?
We have been since, we have been actually doing that. It's part of the recommendation from the chiefs is, and in fact, the chief today in Medbury was talking about how we would evacuate a building, you know, using the bus system and having a secondary location. Because if you all know, Medbury, you have the town office... Town Hall Road, thank you, which is right off the side of the schoolhouse. So the plan currently for Dennis is to move his kids from the school to the town office. It's not far enough away, because that all is really, gets choked up by that one road. So he was recommending that we have a secondary location, which would logically be the high school or the middle school, to get them out of town. And then we set up our command center for parents at another schoolhouse. So, so there's lots of work going on, Megan, to improve our plans, but also to practice those plans. There's just a zillion different things that are going on that everybody's been engaged in to try to improve what we currently have. And what we currently have meets state standard. We're trying to exceed it.
Will there be a section added to the parent handbook for each of the schools to say, like, if there's an emergency at the school at Masway, this is where you go, this is your, this would be your command center? Like, that type of thing? So that when parents read the, because we're all required to read the handbook, sign that we read it at the beginning of the school year. I think it would be helpful if we added to the parent handbook our expectations in emergency, so that parents know, okay, I don't run to my kid's school. I go to the high school, or I go to the middle school, or wherever my designated command center is.
And we would, I think that's all good suggestions, Krista. We would work with the police departments to make sure that a certain amount of what we do is internal, not to be shared.
Right.
And a certain amount of what we do, we can share. And so we could work with our chiefs to say, does it make sense for this piece to be part of the public domain? Because we don't want to announce what our strategies are...
Right.
...to the wrong person.
I agree.
So it's that balance. And we work with police to make sure we strike that balance. One of the other things I would put out there is, as I'm talking about the police, the administrative team, including myself, if something should happen at our schools, we are not in charge. And that'll be the hardest part for principals and superintendents to adjust to. If there's an incident, it's the police department. Whether it's the local police department or the state police, they take charge of the scene. So even though we have a plan that said we would, we would vacate, say, to the high school, if the officer in charge says, no, that's not what you're going to do, then, you know, we stay put and do what they tell us to do. And that's different. That's a different role. But that all comes from Homeland Security training. And so absolving yourself of that responsibility is going to be tough for the principals and myself, but that's the right thing to do, because it's no longer an education issue, it's a public safety issue. And we have to shift that responsibility to public safety. So I think what we've done is accomplished what we intended to do. We wanted to announce as loudly as possible and to the camera that we are going forward and putting these systems in place. And Jay and Todd will train their staffs in proper use. And we will train over time our parents and students to adhere to the new protocols. You may get complaints that it's, you know, too tough, or it's inconvenient. Our response to that is the safety of our students comes first. And the sooner we implement these protocols, our middle school and high school would be that much safer. So we're going to move as fast as Brian can to get the vendor in and do the work.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you for moving on this as quickly as you have.
You're more than welcome. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. School Board Committee Updates. The Superintendent's Evaluation Committee would like to have a short, non-public session at the end of the meeting. Policy Committee Keeps Working.
Communications, we've been meeting along, and we, you know, it's funny you mentioned the mailing, because we, it seems to be an obsession of, at least mine, of always trying to get these people that are out there our message. So first thing we discussed was the deliberative session. And what made sure we got the PowerPoint, which it seemed to go pretty well. I think for next year, we'll tell people about the enter and the arrow button, so that they can actually adjust the...
Put a piece of tape on it to push here.
Push that. And then Josh showed us a local school, high school website that we thought was pretty clean. He's going to come back to us with some templates. And then hopefully, and I think this fell in this policy that we just talked about, which is like getting feedback. Hopefully, then Jim can take it to you guys, the administrative team. You can give all your feedback and rip it apart, and ultimately, we can come up with a satisfactory solution that works well. So that's, we talked about that. We also, I hope this got done, we had, you know, speaking about trying to reach people, we've tried to, or want to get people who are not on the Alert Now system, that don't have any kids, the opportunity to get updates from what's going on. And so we wanted to have a sign-up sheet so that, and there were definitely some people who didn't have kids there last night. So hopefully, they signed up last night. We can get them on the Alert Now system. And also, we discussed periodically, like maybe once a month, putting on the Durham updates and the Lee Town Crier, that if you don't have kids in the district and you want to get the update, that they'll get the update. So over time, hopefully, the majority of people who want to know what's going on will find out what's going on. And I think that's it.
Any other committees? Sustainability?
Nothing more to say than what happened last night.
Really, Ed, you don't have anything to add? Two hours wasn't enough for you?
No.
Motion to approve regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Krista Second Plaid and discussion.
I'm not going to vote, because I wasn't.
Okay. Then can I have a show of hands? Six in the affirmative, one abstention, abstention. John in the affirmative, motion passed. Public comment? Hearing none. We are moving ahead here. Agenda planning, setting, review, future agenda item list. For agenda planning, the agenda setting, Tom and I would like, if possible, to get a regular time that we can meet, so that we know.
Sure.
Every Thursday at 8 o'clock, or make it at 8. Or whatever. You get back to us on that.
Do.
I just don't see this on our list, is the whole discussion about the enrollment at the elementary schools? Possible discussion about redistricting?
Redistricting?
Yeah.
Yep, I was, I've been preparing for the March meeting.
Great, great.
As Tom told me two months ago.
Hold your feet in the fire. I have, I don't know when this is going to happen, but it seems to me that in the conversations about Newmarket or bringing in tuitioning students, we've talked about it in terms of space. We've talked about it in terms of economics. What money would bring in, and do we have the space? And it seems to me that's a kind of impoverished discussion. There's more things going on. If you go from a school of 650 to 900, there's infrastructure, there's parking, there's athletic fields, you know, there's, what will have to change, what will have to be done to do that? You know, for example, you'll have teachers who won't have their own classrooms. I mean, that's going to happen, because, you know, now you have classrooms that are vacant, because during the time that the teacher's not teaching, that classroom isn't used. So I mean, that's, that's a, not, you know, I'm sure you've done art on the cart, right?
I did, as a matter of fact. I started my career.
So, and I'm just, you know, I'm not saying that's an impediment to doing it, but it seems to me, I would like to find some way to get, to broaden the discussion. What does this mean? You know, parking, you know? In terms of curriculum, does it mean, what does, what does it mean? You know, it's harder for people to, you know, if you're bringing in students from Newmarket who are losing their school, there's going to be a transition and a loss, and maybe even a mourning for what they've lost, and teachers that they've lost. And how are you going to handle those kinds of things? So it just seems to me that we, you know, it's not, we're not talking about a warehouse, we're talking more like a family, you know? Bringing people into a family, and how, how we're going to do that. And so, so I don't know how we get that discussion going and getting people talking about it, but it seems to me we haven't talked about it quite as fully as we might.
Okay. We can, Todd and I can work on that.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Lunchtime.
Can I make, I should say something about...
Can I make -- I should say something about sustainability, because, you know, I've been dwelling over what I, you know, what things I should have said or how I should have said things. I think that one thing that Paul Krasowski brought up in an email was that, you know, really sort of defined the issue in a lot of ways for what the sustainability has to sort of promote and, you know, I think do a good job at persuading a big segment of the population the value of what they're trying to do for the community and for the school district. So I think that that was the positive note to come out of last night's meeting, is that, you know, it's kind of, I think, made it clear what needs, how the sustainability needs to be, more education as far as what the value of it does have for the school district.
I have one quick comment on that.
Okay.
It's a quick one. I, you know, last night, my brain was kind of, you know, stuck in the budgetary mode. I didn't say anything about the sustainability, but I think what was lost last night, and I think Paul kind of alluded to it, was like with the structure, and we've done it at the board level, we said that it's an unusual situation right now in that it has a separate budget that's separate from us, but -- and it's in the process of being incorporated in us. And I think that's what was hard for people to understand last night. Why is this money here, and how does this really relate to the district itself? And that is being addressed, and it will disappear by next fall.
Okay. And the next meeting is not until March, but stay tuned, because we will have to have a short, special meeting for manifests.
Of course, we will.
And with that, I'd like to go into non-public session.
Make a motion to go into non-public session, RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2C.
Okay.
To discuss the superintendent evaluation.
That was moved by Krista, seconded by Al.
And we need a roll call.
And we need a roll call.
And Lane Aye.
Krista butts yai.
Al Holland Aye.
I'm New Cook Aye.
Maria Bonn, yes.
Charlie Aye.
Megan Turnbull Aye.
John Parsons Aye.
Seven in the affirmative.
Even though I can't...
Send it to me.
Okay. Great.
Can we go?